Quartered by Marshall Community Media. Is there anybody else any videotaping? Can we stand for the Pledge of Legions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right. Just want to make a few comments here. I want to let everyone know that in this process, we have two candidates that have resumes that are very different. I speak for myself that a portion of my questions will be based on the candidates' resumes and the other questions will be asked of both. This is a big decision for the Select Board to make. It is my belief it is incumbent on the Select Board to ask questions. We need to make the best decision going forward for the town. If anyone is wondering why I did not schedule a vote tonight, the reason being is I felt this is a decision that should not be rushed. I feel the Select Board should take the time to think about this decision. We need to be confident in the direction we choose to go in choosing a new town administrator. It is a three-year decision according to our town charter. Thank you. Has anybody signed in for public comment? I don't see anybody go up there, but...
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Trish. All right. So let's move into our six o'clock appointment, and that will be with Kyle E. Gefkin. Is Kyle available? Can he hear us?
I think he's frozen.
Is he coming in IT?
Very good. Yes, I'm available.
All right. Now we can hear you, Mr. Gefkin. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Would you like to make any opening statements?
Absolutely. I mean, there's a few things I would like to go over. I know as it's been reported, I'm sure the information you have and I read in Duxbury, regarding my departure from Fort Smith, and I think that's best for me to approach that head-on. Last December, I was let go for an errant comment that was made, but not made by me. There are 11 microphones in the meeting room, and the camera was on me for the meeting when the comment was made, and my mouth did not move. But the Board of Directors, after almost two years of rumors of them wanting to get rid of me, and despite an evaluation in the month prior, in November of '24, that I was high-performing and excellent, there was a decision to relieve me. So just to let you know first, before we get into any of the questions, and then I'll now start what I would like to just give you a summary of my experience and who I am. I have over 30 years of experience. Started my work-life in the New York City Department of Health. I was financial analyst, assistant budget director where I oversold the operating, the non-personnel operating budget and capital budgets. In 1994, 1996, I became the budget director. When I left there in 1998, the budget was $1 billion with 5,200 employees with over 100 funding streams. From there, I went to the New York City Department of Investigation, the inspectors general for the city of New York. And I, as assistant commissioner, I was responsible for all administration, HR, finance, procurement, office services, and of course, IT. I was there for about five years until I returned back to the New York City Department of Health, now called Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, after a merger of both separate agencies. And I helped transfer several departments from the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation, the public hospital system, back to the Department of Health. That included correctional health and dental health and children's health. And correctional health was one of the largest contracts for the Department of Health, and that was the $105 million contract for the provision of mental and medical services to inmates on Rikers Island. I was there for three years. I really wanted to get into city, specifically city government work. And it was difficult coming from the city of New York because although the number of employees are still about the same, at about 330,000 employees, the budget's now $100 billion. So the work is very focused and doesn't give you the broad experience necessary to operate a town or city. So I went and first went to work for a nonprofit called NADA, National Association of Drug Abuse Prevention. And their primary mission was the assessment of everyone who applied for welfare to be assessed for any drug or substance abuse or alcohol issues, and also their ability to work. I was there for about two years. There was a, I had a break in my employment due to a very severe health issue in my family that I needed to address, but then went back to work and worked for the Brooklyn Britannic Garden as CFO VP of Finance, and that was an interim position. Left there, and I was able to become the Director of Finance for the city of Reading, Pennsylvania, and I started there in April of 2009. Shortly thereafter, by August, I was also HR Director. And then by the following March of 2010, I was Managing Director, or City Manager. It is a similar position. It was a difficult job because when I started in 2009, the budget was somewhat balanced using one-time funds. But for the 2010 budget, there was a $75 million of projected general fund spending with only $60 million worth of revenues to support it. And our pension obligations were rising each year. I managed to bring that budget in balanced, and it took a lot of reductions, a lot of revenue increases, mostly reductions, and we looked at how we could make the city more efficient. Also, in 2010, Reading was declared the poorest city in the country with a population of over 50,000 people. So it was difficult working in that. Also for HR, I negotiated all collective bargaining agreements for the city. So as the city was heading towards bankruptcy, I put in the city, I applied for Act 47 of 1981, the Financially Distressed Municipalities Act, to help the city. Most cities of Reading size in Pennsylvania either have been or are currently in that program, including cities like Pittsburgh. After that, at a change of mayoral administrations, I went to work for Berks County, where Reading is the county seat. I worked there for about four years as Chief Operating Officer overseeing all aspects of a county. That included Veterans Affairs, nursing home, jail, mental health and developmental disabilities, children and youth. And that was a department I also ran while I was the COO. I was there for four years, and extended family in Arkansas, a group of nieces, were asking to see us more frequently here in Arkansas. So I was looking for a position closer to them, and that's when I applied for the position of City Administrator for Fort Smith. And I was fortunate enough to be hired, and I started in May of 2016, and I was with the city of Fort Smith for almost nine years. I have a very open and accepting management style. I'm never too busy to speak to especially any department head or any employee. I frequently go to each department to learn firsthand from the department head and from the employees what they're doing, how they're doing it, what their successes are, and what their issues are. I explain to them, to especially department heads, I draw them a large square, and I say, "Look, please, take the initiative. You know better than anyone how to do your job. Move forward to really help move the town forward, in my case, the cities forward, in order to make improvements, to bring about efficiencies. And if we ever do run into a problem, as long as you bring at least one way to resolve it, bring it to me, and we can work on it together." I meet regularly with department heads and, in this case, Select Board members to just sit and discuss what's happening, to learn what's going on, to share information that I think is very important. Regarding communication, as I mentioned in the prior interview with the department heads and union leaders, communication is key. And in Fort Smith, I started a program, an application through Granicus called GovDelivery. We decided to focus Fort Smith using Granicus products, GovMeeting, the website application, GovDelivery. GovDelivery allows residents, and anyone for that matter, to sign up to receive information. For, in Fort Smith's case, we had 31 items from which they could choose, from press releases to information about solid ways to recycling, the police department, fire department, parks, upcoming events. So we could get out information much faster than we could by using the old-fashioned press release method or just sending out emails. And it really did help our residents and family members of residents around the country to learn about what Fort Smith was working on and how well we were doing. So communication is one of my key elements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gefkin. All right. I will start out with the questions. All right. Going through your resume, what you sent us, you helped reverse a projected $15 million deficit in Reading, Pennsylvania, and establish a $12 million fund balance. Could you please share with us what course of action it took to reverse that situation?
Absolutely. A lot of that is down to my experience working for the city of New York. The city of New York has four budgets per year. It's a rolling budget, it's not zero-based like most cities and towns are. And we were always tasked with cutting the budget and not reducing services. And so you become very adept at realizing what is fluff and what is core, what's needed, what the bone is. You can cut some of the meat, cut some of the fat, but not the bone. And so I brought that to Reading. And so when I looked at the budget, and we had at that point 204 budgeted police officers, and we were down to 175. And so that was when a police officer in 2009 with benefits caused the city of Reading $100,000. So there were reductions that were made, not in the fire department at the time per contract, but I was able to do that in the police department, Parks Department, took the parks budget, and we created a nonprofit where we took a lump sum payment that we used to run our parks with, and we gave it to this nonprofit, Reading Recreation Commission, that's still in use, still active today and doing even better. We gave them control of all of our community centers. And so taking a $600,000 budget, and we pared it down to 372, we gave them that much, they were able to then go out and match that with grants and other funds from the private sector, from the state, and other nonprofits, to actually, we were able to expand our park service, even though we reduced our budget. And so there were many reductions along the way. We also had to increase revenues. Our real estate transfer tax had to be increased slightly. We were able to, based upon being accepted into Act 47, we were able to charge a one-half percent income tax on people who lived outside the city but worked in the city. And so between all of that, plus keeping a sharp eye on our expenses, we were able to balance the budget. We also then did an in-depth forensic audit and noticed that we had many do-to-do fronts that had never been corrected. Because unfortunately, at that time, the enterprise fund for sewer and the general fund were commingled, and they never reconciled them until the end of the year. So they didn't know their cash position in each fund until December. I stopped that practice, and then we went through all of the do-to-do fronts, and we were able to identify where the general fund was owed money and corrected that. It passed muster with our auditor and with the state. So bringing in strong financial controls was key. In Reading, like in Fort Smith, we started to create multi-year budgets, projections, just like we did in the city of New York, where you have your current year, and you projected four out-years. It's something I started in Fort Smith. Every town or city should do this, so you can see a cliff coming before it actually hits. And that's one of the successes in Reading and hopefully soon to be fully implemented in Fort Smith. That's how we were able, and I was able, to fix their budget.
Just on a follow-up on that, in Reading, did it require you to do any layoffs?
Yes. Yes. 11 police officer positions were laid off. I did them myself as Director of HR, come up with them as Director of Finance, City Council agreed. None of us liked doing it, none of us wanted to do it. But we laid off 11 positions. There were also retirements coming up, and people that, and there were officers that were concerned due to Act 47 that I was going to take away their pension. And I said, "No, I am not going to do that." As I said frequently, there was another city scrum, and that used Act 47 as a battering ram to harm the unions and their employees. And I made them a promise, I was not going to do that. So between retirements and people and officers that left, we were able to bring those 11 officers right back. And in fact, based on the number of officers that did leave and retire, the newly hired police officers were so active and gung-ho and great at their job that, as a result of their work, the district attorney for Berks County had to hire another ADA in order to handle all the work. So it worked out. It worked for the city of Reading, where crime remained the same and decreased. Same thing happened in Fort Smith. Crime decreased despite not having what the number of officers the FBI recommends based on your population.
And can you explain the real estate transfer tax?
Oh, just when a person sells, when there's a real estate transaction between the buyer and seller, in Reading, it was 5% of the sales price was paid to the city.
Interesting. And then you mentioned a tax on those, I think, who lived outside the city?
Yes. While the city of Reading was in Act 47, it allowed us to, with state approval, to charge, to levy, a one-half percent income tax on people who worked in the city but didn't live in the city. And that allowed, that was used for the short-term, city of Reading is out of Act 47 now, allowed us to balance our finances and then bring about, after I left, bring about the necessary organic growth. So now, out of Act 47, that money is, that tax levy is no longer needed.
In Fort Smith, Arkansas, you helped increase the general fund balance from $7 million to $45 million. Could you please share with us how you increased the general fund to such a generous amount?
Absolutely. When I got to Fort Smith, as I would say to some of the Board of Directors, and especially within the Finance Department, Fort Smith was 20 years behind the city of Reading. When they would create their budget, they would, before I got there, they would start with fund balance, add in revenues, subtract the expenses, and as long as the ending number was positive, they thought that was a good thing. And I said, "Absolutely not." Again, going back to my time with the city of New York, it's revenues supporting expenses, and then you best keep that difference to zero or a positive number. At least that's where I would always want to place it. When the governing body would then come about, they would make their own decisions. So that's what I did. And in fact, the first years were very lean. In 2017 and 2018, there were no salary increases. We couldn't afford them. But I brought to the Board of Directors requests to increase funding, especially in our public safety, one of which was the reinstitution of a business license and business fee. It was $100 per company. If, and in Arkansas, if you have a business license with another city, it's accepted in Fort Smith. But for those towns that are in, for those companies, businesses that are in Fort Smith that don't have a business license anywhere else, they pay it to the city of Fort Smith. And that brought in approximately $600, brings in approximately $600,000 to $700,000 per year. I had wanted $100 and an amount per employee. The Board was not receptive to that. We accepted, they did pass it. We dedicated that money to the police department because their equipment was so, how can I say this, shabby, especially their vehicles, that we had to go on a crash replacement to make sure they had the equipment they needed. Number two, I was very tight with the budget. I always had each department head present their new need requests and what they needed. They were always prioritized. And then during each budget review session, of course, during the point in time when the budget was compiled, like most towns and cities, the Finance Director, I had my deputy city administrator myself, we would sit with each department and go over their budget, and they had to justify each of their line items. They couldn't, we had, we have a system that, in Munis, that they had to put in a justification for each line item. So we were able to vet what they were doing, why they were doing it, and they had to bring it back to either a KPI or, and/or, a project they were working on. In fact, when I put out the directives that each line item needed to be justified, there was one, a deputy director in the Utilities Department, that when we came to his, it was engineering at the time, we came to his budget, and I said, "Why is there no backup justification?" And he said, "Well, I just increased everything by 3%." And although many of the, all of the deputy directors and much of their support staff were in the meeting, I said, "You'll get what you had last year because I gave this directive. We have to be prudent with our money, especially in the Utilities Department as an enterprise fund, and that's not acceptable." He learned from that, and they all realized that I was very keen on making sure that we justified every penny we spent. And it went for general fund operations as well as enterprise funds. Because if all the funds that operate the city are operating well, that's how you can afford operational increases for things like equipment, salary increases, that are key to maintaining a healthy, healthily-operated city.
You mentioned the use of a sales tax. First was proposed as a funding mechanism for the Clean Waters Act, and then you mentioned the creation of a sales tax called TIF that was recommended to the state legislature. Were you proposing a sales tax that the city of Fort Smith would create?
Yes. Arkansas does, we're not allowed to, cities are not allowed to levy an income tax, so it's either through property taxes or sales taxes. And the cities, cities and towns are allowed to levy up to a 3% sales tax. Fort Smith is currently 1 and 3/4 to 2%. It's changed. They had a vote recently. But since Fort Smith also had a federal wastewater consent decree, just like city of Reading, Pennsylvania, the amount, the cost of the work that needed to be performed was over $600 million by the time we got through the negotiations with DOJ. And I say we were able to determine that number because when I got there, the Utilities Department did not have a capital improvement plan or budget. None of the departments did. I required them to institute those budgets so we could see what we needed to spend our money on, and then did from that determine how we could finance it. So one of the funding mechanisms was taking a current 1% sales tax that was dedicated to streets, bridges, and associated drainage, and reduce that. Because we were fortunate that, based on some economic development projects and growth we were experiencing, the amount of money that we generated for 1% sales tax increased from about $14 million to $21 million. And that's the benefit of economic development and making sure that your tax base is diverse. So we took, and my proposal, which was ultimately passed, was to divert 3/8 of that sales tax towards the consent decree, and then use that money to issue bonds to help pay for the necessary work, the first half of the necessary work for the consent decree, which will be about $300 million. I did, before leaving, I had a full financing plan that I had developed that was vetted by PFM, Public Financial Management of Pennsylvania, as well as S&amp;P, they saw it as well, and the state and federal governments, to show that through the use of sales taxes and moderate increases in water and sewer rates, that the city of Fort Smith could actually afford the $600-plus million for the consent decree work, the $250 million to build a new water line, and the $100-plus million, $150,000 that's needed for non-consent decree sewer work. So that was number one. Regarding the TIF, Arkansas does not permit, does not allow school taxes to be, because there's your state, your city tax, your, on property tax, your county, and then school district. Arkansas does not permit school district property taxes to be included in a TIF, which makes them not a very good use of, for economic development purposes. And so I was working with our state's delegation to get that changed. One change, though, I was able to get through by working with one of our local business leaders, was to allow the use, the refund of sales tax to entities who were looking to develop or set an economic development initiative. And in that case, it was the Bass Pro Shop that wanted to come to Fort Smith, but they also wanted the refund of sales tax. And because of the state constitution of Arkansas, cities, and this goes back to the Great Depression, cities are not allowed to lend their borrowing power or their financial ability to any private institution, even nonprofits. So that's one thing that we were able to change.
During the time of the Department of Investigation in New York, your resume states that you were the chief financial officer of this department. Did you participate in any of the investigations?
A few. And that was when anything financially, if they needed financial information in dealing with the Office of Management and Budget, yes. I attended the weekly investigatory meetings, the updates, because that was the way I was able to learn what was happening within the department, what resources would be necessary, so I could then plan and prepare the administration to help support the investigation division.
So I'm going to ask this, I know you kind of stated, but did you learn from those who did the investigative work that you could apply to this position as town administrator?
It was how they investigated financial issues. It was funny because the investigators and inspectors general would always say that people who commit wrongdoings invariably do something and mess up, and that's how they're able to find them. But there was one investigation that concluded shortly before my departure, and that was with the Department of Finance and how they assessed buildings in the city. So if they took a bribe from a building owner for this building in the center, they didn't have the values up here and then drop down to this one building and go back up. They realized, the assessors in the Department of Finance realized, if they slowly brought it down for the adjacent buildings and then slowly brought it back up, the building that, where they had received the bribe, would not be an outlier. And so that, I learned from that, that you have to be aware, not just of what you're looking at, especially financially, but you need to be aware of what's going on on either side. And that's helped me in all of my positions since working at the Department of Investigation. Because if you see a trend, if you see something that looks reasonable, but then you need to look at the larger picture and ask, "Why is it doing this?" In that case, of the investigation regarding the assessors. Numbers will always tell a story, and that's what I learned.
I know at the beginning, when you made a statement... I know at the beginning, when you made a statement, you wanted to make some, you wanted to clarify a situation that happened in Fort Smith, Arkansas. So somebody recently sent me something in regards to, something in the past, I want to see if you can clarify, clarify this. We had an issue just recently with the, within the Governor Haley's office in hiring a possible drug dealer. And this is what somebody sent me, so I wanted you to clarify this. Did you appoint someone to a position that was or is supposedly a meth dealer?
No.
Okay.
No. I can, I, I'm pretty sure I know the person who was there, who, who sent that. There was a person, Michael Robinson, who had come to Fort Smith. He had been a meth dealer in Texas. He came up to Fort Smith, lived at our low barrier homeless shelter Hope Campus. He turned his life around. He realized the error of his ways. He paid his debt to society. He then went and, and got a full-time job. And he had, I'll say, issue with much of the city, but he didn't have with me. Because when I was working with him and we were talking, it was to work on a diversity committee to help address diversity within the city of Fort Smith, especially in public safety departments. It was to make sure that we were hiring not only the most qualified, but we were reaching out to as many people as possible in many areas of the city and in many types of demographic backgrounds so they could realize what they, that they could have a job working for the city of Fort Smith. That is what I did. He went a little too far in terms of thinking that he was going to develop and run the committee and we parted ways because of that. But I also did learn a lot about what he faced and how we need to make sure that we are hiring the best people and that they can come from all different walks and parts of society.
Do you have procurement experience?
Yes. I had, when I, especially when I was with the Department of Health. At one point, I was also Director of Administration for the Ryan White Grant. And when I was in that, and that was after, before going to becoming Assistant Budget Director, I did the procurement, all the contract work, the RFP work, to, that resulted in hiring the nonprofit to help the city of New York manage its one hundred plus million dollar Ryan White Grant. I did the same when, again, I was back at the New York City Department of Health in two thousand, between two thousand and three and two thousand and six. I did the other, next RFP, and that procured, resulted in the procurement of a contract with prison health services for a hundred and five million dollars per year. I'm also aware of procurement activities and the right way to perform procurements for both large and small scale. Of course, it depends on the laws of the state of Massachusetts and, and the city and the town of Marshfield, on where the thresholds are and, and where the town administrator has the authority to procure up to a certain dollar amount, whether or not telephone bids are, are required, whether or not you actually have to do written quotes. Yes, I have all of that experience because procurement has reported to me through most of my life, work life.
If you were to be hired by the select board, do you plan living in the town of Marshfields?
I would like to, yes, very much so.
When reading your resume, the one I, I did not see listed is how you worked with the schools in their budget. Marshfield has a shrinking student population and a growing school budget at the school committee and the superintendent peer, not willing to get a grasp of, in my opinion. How would you tackle this issue as the schools are more than half the town's budget?
Yes, I, I noticed also the, the peace budget, for lack of a better term, the, the peace treaty agreement for, that resulted in six hundred and thirty one thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars coming out of fund balance in order to come to that level of agreement. Most cities that I've worked on, worked at have, school district has been separate and had their own funding streams. However, I do work closely, especially in Fort Smith, where the superintendent and I work very closely together. It's like any large enterprise fund that has its requirements, and it comes down to working together and communication and having shared goals. Now, when I lived in Maplewood, New Jersey, and the Maplewood South Orange School District came out and they were very proud after I went to move from there in two thousand and nine, that they had had their first budget increase of less than three percent in the past decade. And so you compound that, you realize that is a staggering, staggering increase. So it's sharing that information, that there are financial constraints that apply, and the school district is highly regarded. I believe it has a rating of B plus in Marshfield. But again, with shrinking student populations, based on the aging of the demographics of Marshfield, that's something that needs to be discussed because you cannot get blood from a stone. But there are ways to work together and there are ways to work more efficiently. And I would, I would make that feeling known and that work on coming to some type of an agreement because Marshfield cannot dip in to standardize, to routinize, or operationalize a six hundred and thirty one thousand dollar annual dip into their fund balance to make that happen. In fact, though, if we can do growth and with the settlement of the MBTA agreement and the, and if, if proper housing can be built, and I'm going a bit astray at this point, but the future of housing is in livable, walkable communities, and that is typically higher density. And if that higher density can be built in appropriate areas that do not harm the, the small town field of Marshfield, it will allow for more people to move in and especially hopefully maintain and keep the younger people of Marshfield and surrounding area to move there based on all the amenities Marshfield has, that will then help us increase our tax base.
Do you believe you could formulate an economic plan that will not increase the taxes on the citizens of Marshfield? If so, what would that tax plan look like?
There's always the ability to do that. I mean, I did it in Redding after balancing the budget, but, and Fort Smith, because we had very few revenue enhancements. It comes down to the appetite of the select board and the residents. Because in mathematics, I think we've all heard of N minus one degrees of freedom. And if you know that you have to hit a specific dollar amount and you can go no higher, that means everything else needs to fit in, within that total. And when you get to that last item, that's what N minus one means, that last item is fixed. So by working together, by finding efficiencies, that's what you do first. And I'm sure based on what I've read and my research, you have some very high performing department heads. And I'm sure they've already done their best, given the fact that the, there was a large budget decrease from twenty twenty five, I believe around 10%. But that's always the first goal. It's always to say, no, we're not doing a tax increase, and how can we live within our needs? As for a plan, it would take time to develop that plan and sitting with the department heads and understanding where the school district is to make sure that the town, that Marshfield is not put in a similar situation, to see how we could live within the projected revenues that come in, especially without going for an override, budget override.
What is your idea of an economic development?
Okay, just in general or a plan?
Yeah, I mean, it was part of your, your paperwork and so.
Well, economic development can mean two, well, multiple things. Number one, first of all, Marshfield does not want to eliminate its small town field. So that means keeping more of the development to residential. But ninety-three percent of the taxes that come into Marshfield are based on residential taxes. So there needs to be some, my opinion, there needs to be some diversification in that revenue stream. And that means making sure you have commercial entities. Now, in Fort Smith, we had specific areas, because the city is sixty, over six, sixty eight square miles. So we had areas where we could bring in industrial and commercial businesses, like Mars Pet Care and Gladfelter, Walther Arms. We had businesses already there, Owens Corning, we brought in Silicon Plastics. And so we had that core group of businesses. But if you don't have them, we need to be able to see what could be used to, and I'm looking for a piece of paper, the way I can't find it, to draw, and to play on the strength that Marshfield has. And one of it, of course, is being on the water. So with aquaculture, marine businesses, something that keeps within the strengths of Marshfield. There are areas, based on the size, and I, I believe that they exist, that areas can be then devoted towards commercial and industrial areas that are within, in, that are within keeping the small town atmosphere. They don't need to be large corporations like an automobile plant, but several smaller entities make development incentives from payments in lieu of taxes to TIFs. And I'm sure the state also has their own economic development, working with the state to say, this is what we would like to do. First and foremost, there needs to be a plan, a plan that the select board agrees upon, and one that the residents also have a large say in what they would like or what they wouldn't like. And if they don't want something that could actually bring in revenues, to understand the impact of that, that decision. So it's developing the plan. I would see and recommend bringing in other commercial and industrial activities, they don't need to be large, playing to the strengths of Marshfield, which include access to water, its harbor, aquaculture. And then saying, this is what we think we can do, this is what we want to do, this is how we can diversify and grow our tax base, while at the same point, looking at economic development as a means of housing. Because with a very high median price of housing, over six hundred thousand dollars, that's not allowing first-time home buyers to come in. It makes for a wonderful community, but it's not something that can be relied upon because in the long run, you're not going to attract the younger people to come and then take the place of the people who are aging.
What is the toughest decision you had to make in your career?
That actually goes back to a point in time, all the way back to my time with the New York City Department of Health. When I was Director of Administration for the Ryan White Grant, our grant started at forty-eight million dollars and the following year was going up to a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty million. The Ryan White Grant is composed of two components, a formula portion based on the number of people who have AIDS and a supplemental portion, which is the quality of the programs you're proposing. And the entity that did all of our programmatic and fiscal work for the Department of Health because it's not to be unexpected that the city of New York can be a little bureaucratic. And so that's why we hired a separate nonprofit to do that work. They could be more agile and still operate within the laws and auspices of both the federal government and the city of New York. So the forty-eight million dollar grant, and I was Director of Administration, they gave me, and I asked for financial updates and projections, year-end projections of spending, there was twelve million dollars of underspending, roughly 25%. And the difficult thing was, when I said, told them, let's find a way to reallocate those funds, they said, oh yes, here are the, I think it was about twenty to thirty entities that could absorb all that money and get services out there. And I said, that's great. I said, how are you going to reduce the contracts for those entities where you're taking the money from? And they said, oh no, we're not going to do that. And I said, that's a violation of federal grant rules and the city of New York contracting because you'll be over encumbering your contract and over encumbering the grant. And they said, oh, we're fine, I'm sure it'll be fine. I said, well, that's easy for you to say, but no, that's illegal and wrong. And the most difficult thing was having to report that to the federal government and ask for guidance. It almost cost me my job because an associate commissioner, who worked directly for the Commissioner of Health, said, if you don't do it, I'm going to fire you. And I said, with an example, that the city of Newark, New Jersey, had done exactly what they wanted me to do, and they lost their supplemental award. And now that the following year award had been given, and it was over a hundred and ten million dollars, roughly sixty million of that was the supplemental award. I said, I can't in good conscience, ethnically or legally or morally, allow that to happen. I was fortunate, there were many people who trusted me, included the Assistant Commissioner for Finance and the Deputy Commissioner for Management and Budget in the department and, and the General Counsel. So I was able to, my view was able to win the day, but I didn't go into that knowing that I may have been fired. That was a very difficult decision on the first, because here I was starting out my career and I was going to be terminated for doing the right thing. But again, doing the right thing is what you do.
Do you believe the Massachusetts legislative branch and the executive branch had to blame for the cities and towns die a financial situation?
You could say Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, Arkansas, New York, you can say any state in the Union, and that question will be asked. It's very difficult, it's very difficult for states to turn around and say, here, here's what's needed for the cities or towns to be able to operate efficiency, efficiently, including being able to hold on and not have unfunded mandates, while at the same time being able to raise the necessary revenues to support their activities. Cities and towns are on the front lines of providing governmental services. And so when you're hamstrung by having to accept unfunded mandates and at the same point being limited by the amount of revenue you can generate, inevitably that's going to wind up in a problem. In Pennsylvania, I quickly mentioned the cities, I named them all, Easton Bethlehem, Allentown, Redding, York, Lancaster, Pittsburgh, Erie. All of these cities have been in or are currently in Act Forty-seven because the Constitution of Pennsylvania prescribes the type of government, cities of the first, second, third class, townships, boroughs, et cetera, and their revenue streams. And that has never been addressed in order to make sure that cities can raise the revenues that are needed in order to fulfill their ever-increasing costs of services. When you look at pensions going up by five, 10, 15%, the costs of actual inputs, equipment, fire engines, even while I was at Fort Smith, fire engine, just an engine, not a ladder, just an engine, went from about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand to three quarters of a million. There's no way a city or a town can absorb that and not a town that has twenty-five thousand people. A city of ninety to a hundred thousand had problems doing that. So short answer to the question, yes. And that's why working with elected officials and making sure they understand, and I'm sure they do, we complete our case to say, these are the changes that are necessary. And using the municipal league, in Arkansas, it's called the Arkansas Municipal League, to say, here are some of the things we need to focus on to try to make our lives easier in order to provide the necessary services that our residents expect.
Do you believe Massachusetts has a housing problem?
When you start looking at, much like, again, city of New York, New Jersey, when you start looking at median household prices that are in well over a half million dollars, and I saw it in the city of New York when I bought my first house on Staten Island for two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, and I thought I had hit the jackpot. I sold that house for six hundred thousand dollars eight years later. It's not just Massachusetts. We're not building enough housing stock in the country. And so inevitably, with supply and demand, the price goes up. And that's why the future is building livable, walkable communities. It's higher density, but people can then walk to where they need to get to via transportation, shopping, amenities. And that is the future. And that can still maintain. That was the small town field going back a hundred and a hundred and fifty years ago. And in many respects, when you look at And in many respects, when you look at beautiful federal homes built in late 18th century, early 19th century, that's how they were built. People were able to live and work together. And it's only been a symptom of post-World War II culture and the thriving, the building out of suburbia, that homes with acres, with multiple acres of land have come to pass and also required cars. So it's not just Massachusetts, it's the entire country. But we do need to address housing and the amount of housing stock.
What are your thoughts on the MBTA zoning act?
I read through part of that. One hand, having worked in city and town government, municipal government for so long, having an unfunded mandate like that is not ever the way it should go. It should come, ideally, with funding to help achieve the goal. And it shouldn't be as one-sided. However, the goal of building affordable housing so you can maintain a housing stock for people like much of the employees that work for the city, when you have a, even though the median income is approaching $100,000, there are many people in the lower-income jobs that cannot afford to live where they work. And it's the same. I could not go back to the City of New York and think about buying a home that's now three-quarters of a million dollars. We need, either our salaries need to be on par, if you look historically over time, you can see that salaries, especially through about 1980, salaries and housing prices went up like this. And then once you hit the very late 1990s, housing prices skyrocketed, but salaries have continued to grow moderately at best. And so, yes, I mean, going back to MBTA, the goal of having affordable housing is key. And I think, though, that is something that Marshfield should work on and provide a plan on how we can achieve that goal without having it beaten over the head and having grants taken away.
Do you believe the state needs to reform its zoning laws?
From the zoning I read, I did not see anything that was out of the ordinary with any of the other states that I've worked in and learned. I mean, I've, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Arkansas, there are four states that I've learned from their constitution, right down to their individual codes of ordinances. At this point, no. You need to be able, sorry, you need to be able to make sure that the housing stock maintains the feel of and the type of town you want, but at the same point in time, we need to address the realities of what's, of what's going on and the needs that our residents and future residents have.
When would you be able to start if the Select Board approves you?
Well, I was very, I was happy to hear when you mentioned that you didn't want to rush into a vote, because I think you should hear from the residents, you should hear from your fellow Select Board members, and based on what people have heard or read or their own research, they should be able to give and provide their input and to see who they recommend to you. Based on that, and assuming that a decision would not be made until after the holiday season, I would need six weeks in order to pack up and move and find a place to live.
Why did you choose to apply to be a Town Administrator in Marshfield?
That's a great question, because it's not about the salary. As was pointed out in the Duxbury article, to have a comparable salary would be much higher. It's never about salary. I made that mistake once, and I will never make it again. It's about the city, it's about the town, it's always, and it's about the people who work for the city. And so based on my research, which was somewhat extensive before I submitted my application, the location, including where you're located, the people, the small-town atmosphere, the needs of Marshfield, which I feel I have the ability to address collaboratively, following the goals of Select Board and providing my input on how to make things fix, to be fixed. It was everything coming together. It was my research on voting patterns, demographics, housing stock. It's expensive, but it's never about salary, ever. It's about the quality and character of the town or city, and that's why I applied.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaffkin. That's all I have for you.
You sure? Just teasing.
I turn it over to Mr. Dossi.
Hi. How did you first learn about the opening in Marshfield?
It was on the ICMA website, which is the International County City Managers Association. I've always been a member, especially during my nine years at Fort Smith. I do not have an ICMA designation, and that's only because I never devoted the time to it, it was always devoted to the city and getting the necessary work done. So that's how I found out about it, I followed through, I've dealt with the recruiter, the lead recruiter, and we met and discussed the position, and that's how I believe it came to be into your position.
Sure. What steps have you taken to learn about Marshfield and what challenges do you see facing the community?
My investigation always starts with a Google search. I'm a firm believer in using Google Gemini AI. It's a great product, Gemini 3.0 has just come out, it's absolutely wonderful. It's looking over the city's websites, doing searches on press, both printed and television. And so coming up with that, the challenges that I see, number one, are the coastal vulnerability in infrastructure with climate change, the Northeastern, there was one this year, the defenses against the ocean are primary. I mean, we have to make sure that that's done first and foremost. And going through all of that, you know, besides addressing flooding and erosion and adapt, we need, besides adapting to climate change, there are many ways that, that it can be addressed, and that doesn't necessarily mean just building a larger seawall. It can be things like in Davenport, Iowa, where they're the only city along the Mississippi that does not have a wall against the river to stop flooding. Instead, they build up areas so when the Mississippi does rise, they have the land as a buffer to stop flooding. They use a natural buffer to do that. Second is just the state regulatory conflicts, predominantly the MBTA Communities Act. I know that's been settled, and that's great, but you know, there's still the appeal that's going on, and that needs to be addressed because there needs to be a solid working relationship with the state. And I hope that there is one in other aspects, in other areas. But this is, issuing a lawsuit is the last thing that should ever be done, because at the end, as we've all heard, nobody wins except the attorney, at least there's a city attorney in this case. But it's always best to make sure that if you can find a way to resolve something ahead of time, it's better to do that. The next is fiscal pressures. As I mentioned before, the $631,000 budget gap, that's going to be in next year's budget because of what came out of fund balance this year for the school. That's a large gap that needs to be filled before going into any increases in minimum pension contributions, salary increases, the cost of insurance and other fringe benefits, and just what the departments need. That's the third item. And the fourth one, as we spoke about previously, is housing and affordability. I mean, it's, it's wonderful to be able to have that, but it's also not, it's a blessing and it's also a curse, because if a city wants to grow, yes, you can bring in more people that could afford an $800,000 home, but your, your town is much more than that. And so you want to be able to have the people that work there, to be able to live there, to have an investment in that town. And that means having a significant amount of affordable inventory. So those are the four challenges that I have found. I mean, there are other, I have performed a SWOT analysis as well.
Thank you. Could you, could you describe your familiarity with Proposition 2 and 1/2 in Massachusetts and the fiscal challenges facing municipalities across the state?
Yes. Essentially, from what I've read, it was enacted in 1980, and Proposition 2 and 1/2 is a state law that strictly limits how much municipality can increase its total property tax revenue from year to year, and that's levying at 2 and 1/2%. Of course, an override is possible, but there are three different types of overrides. A general override, which if passed, allows the town or city to increase what they can levy on a permanent basis for ongoing operating expenses. The, the second one is a debt exclusion, which I believe occurred this year, and that's temporary, lasting for anywhere 10 to 30 years, depending on the length of the project. And the third one is a capital outlay exclusion, which is temporary and lasts one year, allows for the purchase of, let's say, a large item such as a fire truck or ambulance. And so, and then the process is that the Select Board needs to vote on it, and then it needs to go to the residents for approval.
Your career path is more geographically diverse than some of the other candidates. You've worked in New York City, Pennsylvania, Arkansas, and now potentially Massachusetts. Could you describe what has led you to relocate in these different iterations of your career?
Absolutely. Some of it has been due to family, but most, it's, it's due, as I mentioned before, the quality of the city, the challenges that I would face, and the excitement that I feel, that I feel for the not only position but the location. You know, working for the City of New York opened my eyes and gave me a great foundation for working in municipal government and nonprofits. I assisted in New Jersey with the budget for my hometown, well, my town where I was living, for a period of time, which was Maplewood, New Jersey, just west of Newark. And it was then that, when I was looking heavily to get into city government, municipal government, that Reading, PA became an opportunity. And I went in there with, my eyes as wide open as I could find them. And it was the challenge. It was knowing that in 2008, they'd used the revenue from a sale of property, $5 million, to fill their budget. It was, it was directed by City Council to go into a stabilization fund. They didn't, they needed the money to operate. So I knew I could bring my expertise, management, financial, HR, and IT, to help stabilize the city so it could grow again, and that's exactly what it did. Fort Smith, as I mentioned before, I saw Fort Smith 20 years behind the City of Reading. If they'd continued along that path, they would have wound up in dire circumstances. And when I got there, Reading, Fort Smith was the second-largest city in Arkansas. But because of decisions that were made prior, 20, 30, 40 years prior, where they thought being a city of 75,000 was just enough, we don't need to grow, we don't need to build housing, we're good enough, then they lost their largest employer, which was Whirlpool. And they realized that sitting on their laurels should not have been an option, where Fayetteville, as part of Northwest Arkansas, that includes Bentonville, the home of Walmart, had been looking to grow and attract people and build housing. Reading was the same way. Reading was the richest city in the country at the turn of the 20th century. They had the Reading Railroad, they had breweries, they had manufacturing, they had coal. And they did not look to the future to say, what do we need to do to maintain this growth? They thought they were good enough where it was, we want to just hold what we have. And that's a fallacy, because trying to hold on to what you have, it will eventually slip through your fingers, and others will grow around you. And that's exactly what happened in both instances. And so I can see that change needs to be made, and it can be made, as long as the residents and the elected officials can come to an agreement on what that change needs to look like. Anyway, that's a long-winded story of why I went to all of the geographic areas I went to.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, I appreciate that. Have you reviewed Marshfield's town charter, and if so, what were your takeaways or your SWOT analysis?
I did not review the town charter at this point in time, but I can say on my SWOT analysis, and I'll just go through it quickly if you'd like, the strengths, of course, coastal, your position, it's ideal, tourism, excellent public schools that need, as best as possible must always be maintained, the affluent residential base and historic character. Everything that everybody wants to maintain is the strength. However, the weaknesses, aging coastal infrastructure, the over-reliance on residential taxes, the housing affordability gap, and transportation limitations, because being part of the MBTA zoning laws but not having a direct rail service to Boston kind of makes you, you know, scratch your head and say, hmm, we're, we're subject to it based on the geographic location, distance away from Boston, but we don't really have that direct access. Opportunities, now that MBTA is settled for now, the restoration of access to state grants, harbor and business redevelopment, you know, the active projects that are funded by the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, such as the Harbor Park revitalization and new boardwalks, and the opportunities to enhance the Green Harbor area as an economic hub. Blue economy growth, and this is where I was talking about before, the expansion of marine-related industries, aquaculture, and ecotourism centered around the rivers and marshes presents a sustainable economic growth path that aligns with the town's character. That's an opportunity. And zoning-driven development, the newly-adopted multifamily zoning, while politically contentious, provides a control framework for developers to build higher-density homes in specific areas, potentially diversifying the housing stock and tax base. The threats, climate change and the rising of sea levels. State mandates versus local control, I always prefer local control, and that's, that's where government should always be devolved, as long as it has the ability, the authority to do what's necessary, it should always be at the local level. The fiscal squeeze that is facing Marshfield currently, and also regulatory vulnerability in Chapter 40b housing. But you've met the thresholds for that currently, and that's great.
Thank you. And I, I have this, this same question for both candidates, and it, it applies to your 30 years of professional experience. If there's something that you could undo in your professional career, what would it be?
I would probably undo, you know, with age comes wisdom, or at least I hope it does, and also with experience. Some of the, taking my emotions when I was early on, taking some of the emotional component, the personalities out of it, and just realizing that we're all looking to achieve the same goal. There was one time during the implementation of the City of New York budget, and I was behind in getting in the, the Department of Health, it's called a turnaround document, and it was about yay thick. It was, it was literally a piece of paper, and you needed to circle it with a red pen and write in a new number, and you had to do it in specific ways, and I was late in turning it in. And it was because of trying to compile, compile, compile all the different funding streams and minimums, and making sure that we had to then summarize all the funding streams and making sure they were correct, and I was working with OMB on this. And the woman from the Financial Systems Agency, FISA as it was called, which was created from the fiscal crisis of '75, so both the elected comptroller and the mayor had control over this agency, so there was only one set of books, not two, from prior. She called me, and we got into an argument, and that has stuck with me to this day, because at the end of the day, she was only trying to do her job to the best of her ability, as was I. And so that was a common ground we shared. And I regret having that argument, because it was heated. I mean, it got all the way up to the respective heads of our agencies, and there was no reason for it. There are better ways to be able to handle things. And with age, I find, and with experience, I've found, that's typically the case, even when there are people who are upset and angry, keeping your calm demeanor and trying to get to the root of the cause of that is key.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve. Trish?
Hello, Mr. Gaff, Gaffkin. They took all the good questions.
My favorite color is blue.
Oh, thank you. All right, I'm just gonna, I just have a couple of brief ones, kind of building on theirs. In Massachusetts... In Massachusetts, the Select Board serves as both the executive leadership and the collaborative body with many independent commissions. How do you see yourself navigating that dynamic, balancing both the board's policy direction with the day-to-day administrative responsibilities, especially given your prior experience in different government structures?
I've been in government structures that have had many boards and commissions, sometimes from, let's say, Reading, the city council had many separate committees, public works, finance, police, fire. I was present for all of them and required, along with the respective department heads, to provide input and work on their decisions that they then brought up to city council as a whole. I've also looked to develop boards and commissions. Again, back in Reading, first one that comes to me is that we had diversity commissions for both the fire department and police department. And they were set up because of issues with the local Latinx community and the NAACP. And I said, look, we can do better. And working with those entities, city council, and of course with HR, I said, let's merge them. And I put out a proposal to say, look, let's merge them together, because we need to do this for the city, not just their, those respective departments. And I made the goal, and, and there were people that questioned my reason for doing so. But I made sure that the city members on that commission were in the minority. So therefore, if the diversity committee came out with a recommendation, they could overrule the city. And I thought that was probably the best way that we could engender trust and develop a path forward without relying on that good old-fashioned saying we always hear, that's the way we've always done it. It was just something I, I stopped in Fort Smith cold. So I'm used to working with commissions with elected officials, elected officials that are both the executive and legislative branch. And it's, again, comes down to communication, sitting, and sitting down with you and, and those that are, are involved and listening and talking and coming up with a means to resolve any issue or come up with plans to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Marshfield has a rich and proud history, and part of that history includes longstanding connections within our political and civic systems. To help us understand your perspective and potential role here, could you share whether you have any existing relationships with Marshfield employees, boards, or local organizations?
I do not at this point, no.
Okay.
But I do not in Fort Smith either. But I also made sure that I spoke at events, fraternal organizations, organizations such as Rotary. And I never brought a fixed speech. I always said, oh, I don't know what I'm going to say, but I still managed to fill up 45 minutes. Some of each my question and answer, and some of it just providing updates on what's going on. I think of each department and say, what are the high points, and what are the issues are we following? And that always gave them information, and that they could turn around. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna give one example. When I was hired in 2016, it was in 2017, and we were working on the expansion of Ingersoll Road, and it ran next to the former Whirlpool Plant. And I had people at Rotary come and ask me, why are we still doing that project? Whirlpool's not there anymore. And I said, they may not be there, but that road is a single-lane road, one coming and one going, with a nasty little S-bend. And I said, we'll want to redevelop that property. And since we had gotten a federal grant and some state money and repairing it with my funds from the sales tax, streets, bridges, and associated drainage, I said, that project needs to move forward. It's going to be multi-lane with a medium, and because it will allow easier access to the, to that plant and allow better and faster access for residents who live in the south side of the city. What wound up happening is that the Whirlpool Plant, and it's huge, is now 100% occupied, including a company from Jonesboro, Arkansas, by the name of Hytrol, that makes conveyors, conveyor systems, moved in. So, again, it's looking forward and planning and saying, how can we make, in that case, Fort Smith, in this case, Marshfield, more attractive for people and businesses to come?
Okay, I just want to thank you for obviously doing your homework on Marshfield. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. It's, it is literally the least thing I could do.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Geftin, I appreciate your time. Obviously, we're not, you don't have to leave the Zoom page, and you can watch the next candidate coming up. But thank you, and we'll, after this, decide when we want to hold the meeting to put a vote together.
Very good. I do actually have an appointment. I'm an hour behind, and there's a Christmas show that I've been invited to, so I will be leaving. But I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to interview. Marshfield's a wonderful city, and I like, yes, a wonderful town.
Town, yes.
Like every town or city, county throughout the country, each one, even the ones that are the most fiscally stable, there's always issues that need to be addressed, and it's how we address them together is what counts.
I appreciate it, Mr. Geftin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
You do the same.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have to get Danielle's?
Yep.
I didn't think you were gonna stop.
I had more questions, to be honest with you. I asked them out, but I think Steve covered it, so that worked out well.
That's good, yeah. There are pros and cons to going third sometimes.
That's okay. I got a lot of information.
Anyone have to go to the bathroom?
Yeah, does anybody, you want to take a break or anything? All right, yeah, so why don't we call for a five-minute break? Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're gonna reopen this meeting at 7:20 under 7:02. Just to be fair, I read a statement earlier. I, so you weren't a part of it, nothing big, but I just wanted to let you know. So I want to let everyone know that in this process, we have two candidates that have resumes that are very different. I speak for myself, that a portion of my questions will be based on the candidates' resumes and the other questions we've asked to both. This is a big decision for the select board to make. It is my belief it is incumbent on the select board to ask the questions we need to make to the best decision going forward for the town. If anyone's wondering why I did not schedule a vote tonight, the reason being is I felt that this is a decision that should not be rushed. I feel it's like we should take the time to think about this decision. We need to be confident in the direction we choose to go in in choosing a new town administrator. It is a three-year decision according to our charter. Thank you. With that said, so I'm gonna start out with questions off your resume. And then there were questions that I asked Mr. Geftin earlier that I will ask you, okay? So I should do an, first off, Leilani?
Leilani.
Leilani Dalby, would you like to give an introduction to yourself?
Sure. So, public administration is a second career for me. I was a musician with a master's in music for years. And then I am from Massachusetts and moved back here in 2007. And I got a call from the town clerk one day that said I had won, and apparently I had gone to too many meetings and asked too many questions, and I was written in as a finance committee member without me knowing. So I figured if the people in Middleborough wanted me to do this, I would step up and do it. So I did. Once I got in there, that was it. I got bitten by the bug, public administration. I ran for select board. I won three times. I was chair the last three years I was there. And then when COVID hit, I decided to go back for an MPA, because this is what I wanted to do. And as part of that curriculum, I went to different towns to offer my services as an internship. And when I went to Weymouth on my way home, the mayor called me and said, would you take the job as the assistant town administrator to Ted, the chief of staff, instead of an internship? And of course, I jumped at it. So it delayed my MPA a little, but I am getting it this month, just so you know. I finished my final paper, learned an incredible amount. Ted let me shadow him on everything. He gave me responsibility. I got my MCPPO certification. I worked in procurement and grants and contracts, managed a lot of infrastructure projects. And then this year, the mayor took me aside and said he was leaving before his term was up, and that my job may not still be there, because the new administration coming in may change everybody over. So I took this opportunity at a private company, Time Bond, to do a lot of what I was doing, project manage, infrastructure projects, grant administrator, and procurement specialist. So that's what I've been doing. The company's phenomenal. I love them. I love the work, but I really miss being in public administration. I got bit by the bug, and I like it. And that's pretty much my background and why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. Okay, so going off your cavaletta, please give me some examples of fiscal management you practiced.
Well, the annual budget. I work with the, the finance team, the accountants who put, and the auditors who put out the Schedule A in November. We work with the assessors to figure out what the assessments and the tax rate is gonna be. I did that in Middleborough as well. I did it in Weymouth. I met with all of the departments. We went over every single budget, Ted, myself. Ted is the chief of staff there in Weymouth. And the department heads, we went over every single line item. So I did that for four years in Weymouth, went over line items, of course, when I was in Middleborough as well. I also was on the capital planning committee in both Weymouth and in Middleborough. And so I helped develop the, the five-year capital plans, ranking what each department needed and its importance, and where we would put it in that five-year capital plan. Is this kind of the vein that you wanted, or were you looking for something else?
No.
Okay.
You're on track.
All right, yeah. So I, I know my way around a budget. I, I'm, I am in the process from the beginning when we figure out what is on our audited Schedule A, through what our assessments and what kind of a budget we're going to have, figuring out the, what the new growth is so that we can add it for next year's revenues. So we did some revenue proposals as well. And then I go through my, I'm in the nuts and bolts of it. I meet with every department all the time. I'm right on it all the time. And I listen. I learned to listen. I don't necessarily know exactly the function of every department and how they're doing things best. And so that's one thing I learned over the last few years. Don't assume, listen, and find out why. And I listen to the whole team. I mean, we have, you have accountants, you have treasurers, you have assessors. They know their product better than I do. I'm very familiar with it. I know my way around it. I know how to bring it all together. But I think it's very important to listen to these experts when you're putting together, as well as the department heads, when you're putting together a budget.
What is strategic community development?
Well, I like to work on the five-year plan where you want to be. So you figure out what you want to do in your community, how you want it to grow, where you want it to be in five years. Then you take an assessment of what you have already. And then you figure out what you're going to have to need to add to it, whether it's financially, whether it's staff, whether it's capital expenses. And then you figure out the best way that you're going to implement them over the five years to get where you want to go. Now, that strategic plan is not always etched in stone. That strategic plan may change, because circumstances may change. You may get a grant that lets you move forward faster on it, and then you can move the pieces around. But it's basically, the strategic plan is to know where you want to go, what you have, and what you're gonna need to get there.
I'm sure you did a little research in regards to Marshfield and its practices. How would you implement that strategic plan in Marshfield?
Well, there's one thing that I didn't really see that Marshfield does. I'm also on the Plymouth County Development Council, and tourism is a really big asset that I think is oftentimes overlooked. And I think that could be part of Marshfield's strategic plan, especially with the 250 coming up. You already have, not only, you have pillars for tourism attractions. So you have the attractions, you have the beaches, but you also have a lot of facilities in place. You have the fairgrounds. Reenactments would be phenomenal there. The MOT, the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism, has statistics that show for every dollar that a town invests in tourism, $8 is brought back to the community, some of which is in revenue for the town, bringing new businesses, spurring new growth. So I think this is a really important time where Marshfield is situated, just north of Plymouth, south of Boston. This is where the revolution started. The state and the country is investing big time in pushing forth 250 tourism. I think that's something that Marshfield could look at for a strategic plan that would be launched over the next year, and that would only grow. So that's one thing. Tourism, I just think, is money, other people's money, and I think it's something that you should look at. You're going to have to, definitely housing is going to be an issue, especially with the MBTA's, what they're implementing. So I just, I did see in Jan, in June 21st, that it finally passed to try to move forward on the MBTA compliance. That, a strategic plan for that, I think would have to include something that's going to be acceptable to the character of Marshfield. I think you're at a point where you can negotiate that with the state and get the housing development that will complement what you have already. So housing development is probably a direction you're gonna have to go in on that, but I think it's something you need to negotiate with the state. Always new growth. New growth, first of all, you have, you have a pretty attractive tax rate for new growth, for businesses. I don't know how many TIFs you have, but TIFs are a really good tool, because with TIFs, not only are they getting, first of all, you're getting a bump in your new growth, so your revenues are gonna go up. Second of all, over a period of time, you're gonna start to get tax revenue back from that, too, as it's paid down. But a big positive for TIFs that's an attraction for businesses is if they get a TIF locally, it, it will open up to get TIFs for them for the state, which is even more valuable to them. So I think that's something you need to start thinking about for businesses that you want to attract to town. So that, I would do that. TIFs to attract business, the housing market you're gonna have to look at. The other thing that's really big is infrastructure, especially the water infrastructure at this point. A lot of grant sources are recognizing that. There are a lot of new programs out there, not just federally, but statewide, that will help you make sure you address PFAS or extension of water and sewer infrastructure. The other thing that's obvious is right here, being on the coastline, addressing the coastal issues where you have seawalls. That, I would say, in, in Weymouth was one of the biggest projects that I worked on. The seawall, the revetment, and five housing elevation programs through FEMA, which is a very large, very complicated project, process, but it's well worth doing that if you want to save the coastline, and I, and I think the seawall as well. There are also some new, new long-term, low-interest, not grant, loan programs that you should look at, because you're gonna have to address that seawall. You're gonna just start losing parts of the town if you don't. So that's another, the infrastructure, coastal infrastructure.
I think you pretty much answered a lot of my, my next question up in regards to that. But I'll, I'll ask it if you want to add anything in sort of. So what do you consider Marshfield's priorities under strategic community development?
Community development, saving the coastline, attracting new businesses, of course, tapping into the tourism. I know I keep saying that, but I think a lot of communities don't do that, and it's gonna be very advantageous for those that do. And addressing the housing shortages and affordability in housing.
How did the Middleborough Tourism Committee and the Oliver Estate Committee generate economic development?
Well, that is actually a wonderful case study, because the first year we purchased that property and we started doing tourism events, the meals and room tax jumped 33%. People thought it was a mistake it was so much. So it brings visitors to town, and that's other people's money that they're spending. So the revenues just for the town jumped 33% from meal and room tax. It was $600,000 they went up. So that was a really big economic boost. Also, when those people came, we had a lot of new businesses that opened. New businesses open, add to the tax base, and pay the taxes. We were funded almost entirely by grant money. The purchase of the Oliver Estate, the, the operating, the improvements for the Oliver Estate, and it's still going, and it still has had several television programs there, which again brings people there. Visitors come. Every time they come on a weekend for events, if we have Festival of Lights, for instance, or herring-run festivals, we get a bump in tax revenue.
How does the Middleborough Tourism Committee and the Oliver Estate Committee tie into community pride?
Well, it's, the assets that they're highlighting belong to the community. And when people come and... And when people come and recognize them from outside the community, we have people that step up, never realized they were there, they volunteer, they support them, and then they market them. People love the Herring Run Festival now. People that lived in Middleborough didn't even know we had a Herring Run. They didn't know it was the largest Herring Run in the Northeast. They didn't know that people came to see this. They didn't know what the herring did. So they learned about their community, they supported their community, and they talk about it. Oliver Estate, same thing. Very important revolutionary building where Benjamin Franklin stayed. People didn't know that. When they learn that, they want to support it, they want to spread the word, they want to get visitors to come and see it. So there's a big community pride in every event that we do. Entirely volunteer-staffed, by the way. Ninety-six volunteers to run one of those festivals, and they're all volunteers.
I know you touched on a little bit of this, but how does balance in seasonal tourism tie into long-term fiscal sustainability for Marshfield?
Well, seasonally, I'm from the Cape. I know. Memorial Day came, and we worked, 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 and we waited till Labor Day. That's when we made our money for the year. So I think you can do the same thing here. I know that your residencies go up during that time. I know there are things that people come and see. I think if you tap more into the events and you could get into the shoulder seasons and start to expand that. You're already doing that. You have the light show in December. Again, the more people you come here, the more people spend money. And that translates to revenue and new growth for the town.
What do you consider smart growth?
Smart growth is being cognizant of what your resources are, making sure you're not destroying them, making sure you're zoning in the areas and with the conditions that will produce growth that is within the character of the town and yet still is economically feasible and possibly, most likely, bringing in revenue as well.
As select here, as you went to where, what zoning reform did you re-champion?
One of the biggest ones was where the Christmas tree shop used to be, on Route 18, right off the Rotary. We rezoned that so that Compass Medical could go in there and all the medical offices and that whole complex right there, that was one of the large ones. We also rezoned down Route 28, and we got the developer to actually extend the water lines down to South Middleborough on Route 28. There was a smart growth 40R development that I worked with Serpeth and the town on, which was on the north of 105 on Route 28 where the, all of the apartment complexes have gone in. So there was a smart growth overlay that I worked on there. Those are probably the three biggest ones. So the, the commercial, the South Middleborough with the water and infrastructure development, and the 40R overlay.
How big was that 40R?
40R was, it's about 600 units. It's been expanded with, they're working on expanding it with the MBTA.
What kind of housing growth did you champion? Obviously you answered.
That was part of it. Yes, it was, it was. Also downtown Mayflower and the Star Mill, I was working with the Economic Development Department then. And, and that was really important because downtown's pretty historic, and we wanted to make sure, they were putting a lot of units in with the Mayflower Avenue apartments. And we, I mean, they had four stories. They wanted to do all these things, which were not within our zoning anyway. But we worked with them to not only keep within the heights and the sizes of units and the number of units, but we worked with them to make sure that they fit in the character of downtown. Because they're all those big old mansions, and you can't just put in a square cement block that says, you know, these are apartments. So they look like big houses, which is nice. They look like them. And Star Mill was another one, and the Shoe Factory, where we took existing buildings that were already down there and had a historic facade and put in the, there are some actually high-end apartments and condos in one of them, and the other is affordable and regular apartments.
What kind of economic development issues did you support?
In Middleborough or Weymouth or wherever?
Yeah, I mean, wherever you served, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, the biggest one was, I also, I also championed some being biodiverse and ready because there's a lot of bio industry coming in. And actually, we went from a bronze to a silver status for that. So what that encompassed was in our, in our commercial area, we changed the zoning so that water requirements and sewer requirements could be used towards biodiverse businesses. So that was one thing that I did. Also downtown, the redevelopment of the former police station, I was on the building committee. So when we moved the police station out of the Pierce Building, which was from 1803, the redevelopment of that with apartments downtown without changing the outside, which again supplied really necessary housing without changing the character of the town or, or taxing the, the infrastructure too much. Water and sewer was already there, so it did not change the capacity too much. I also worked on changing capacity for that 40R overlay. We had extra capacity in other parts of the town for the sewer. And we worked on moving that over so that we could actually support the 600 units that were going in.
Okay. Do you have procurement experience?
Yes, yes, I do. When I went to Weymouth, it was one of the first things that I got was my MCPPO certification, and I worked in the procurement department. So I would help to draft the RFPs, I would review the contracts, I would ensure that we had the correct advertising for whichever project we were doing, if it had to be in COMBIs or on the state's website. And I actually just recently recertified in March for that. So, so yes, I did the whole procurement process. Opened the bids, reviewed the bids, awarded the bids, notified DCAM, what we were doing through the whole process, if it was a horizontal project. So yes.
If you were hired by the Select Board, do you plan on living in the town of Marshfield?
No, I do not. I'm 25 minutes from here. I built my own house. I'm not leaving it. My four dogs would be very upset.
When reading your resume, the one item I did not see listed is how you worked with the schools and their budget. Marshfield has a shrinking student population and a growing school budget that the school committee and the superintendent appear not willing to get a grasp of, in my opinion. How would you tackle the issue as the schools are more than half the town's budget?
That's, that's a common problem. And the schools not budging is a common problem, too. We were able to get a little bit creative in Weymouth. Mostly, well, we had to put our foot down, too. Sometimes you just have to say no. Sometimes it's just no. We had grants that paid for extra instructors outside the curriculum, and when those grants ran out and there was no money to replenish that, the schools wanted to keep them, and we just had to say no. We couldn't do it. So sometimes you just have to say no. But we did get creative in other ways. For instance, on the transportation, we were able to move it around so that it was not such a, a large burden on the actual school budget. We did some of it with ARPA way back when it was ARPA, because we were busing extra kids. But then we were able to, to absorb it in other places. So you have to get creative and think outside the box, and you have to be able to say no, unfortunately. The problem is, the state mandates, if you have this many students, you have to have this many services or this many staff. It's a balancing act. I think you need to start early. You need to start being honest with each other, both the school and the, the general government.
Do you believe you could formulate an economic plan that will not increase the taxes on the citizens of Marshfield? If so, what would that look like?
That's everybody's wish list, isn't it? Yes, there are a few things you can do. So first of all, and I know everybody's cut to the bone on their budgets, but you go through budgets and you make sure there's nothing redundant, nothing that has to be done. So it's, it's, it's streaming in that budget, holding it where you have to hold it. Second of all, you want to re, one, one place that a lot of towns have not looked at, I don't know with Marshfield because I haven't been here, but for many years, many towns have not looked at their fee schedules to see if they're competitive, if they're paying for the actual services that they're giving. That would be another place to look. Another thing is, I noticed you dropped off a lot of your debt service, so it leaves a little more room in there. Maybe refinancing longer-term debt with smaller payments because we're, we're facing a fiscal cliff, the whole town, the whole state is. It's, it's gonna be a squeeze. That may be a temporary relief that will give you time to attract, like I said, the businesses that are gonna do the new growth. I would go with the TIF because if they get the local TIF, it gives them a state TIF. It gives them federal tax breaks as well. So I think maybe refinancing or restructuring what your finance is, not adding to it, but maybe just lengthening the time period that you have to pay it, so you have less in the beginning. And then you can start to catch up more as you, as we get through this, this next couple of years of lack of growth, which is, it's gonna be tough for the whole, the whole state. Every municipality knows what we're going into. It's, it's not easy.
What is your idea of economic development?
Economic development is adding to the tax base. It is adding new growth. It is bringing businesses in, which bring in revenue. And I always caution that you have to be cognizant of what the town's character is and what kind of new growth and what kind of business in economic development it, it can handle and chooses to handle. You know, the public is, is, we are public servants. We work for the town. And if the majority of residents don't want something, you need to have that discussion.
So what would you consider new growth?
New growth? Well, housing developments are new growth. Businesses, industry, if you can get industry. And the tourism industry is new growth. New growth that doesn't cost the taxpayers, by the way. I'm a really big advocate of tourism.
Yeah, it sounds like it's paid off.
It has, it has.
What is the toughest decision you had to make in your career?
It's a few of them. One of them was to go against my four board members. The other four, we were a five-member board. Well, twice it happened for that. One was to advocate for the Veterans Department because the town meeting voted to give them the clerical that they needed in order to process the, the, we were having a lot of retired vets. It was a time after the Gulf Wars. And they needed the help. They needed the help. The town wanted to budget. It was in the budget. But for some reason, the rest of the Select Board didn't want to do it. And I had to, I was new on the Select Board, too, and I had to stand up and say, and vote against them. That was one of the hardest ones, but I still think it was the right vote. Eventually, they did get the clerical they needed. It did not really cost the town, and the veterans got the services that they wanted. That was one of the hardest things I've ever done. Another one was actually in Weymouth, where I can be a little stubborn, which can be good or bad. It, it worked out good for this time, but it was a hard decision. It was for the revetment walk between the beaches that they had been trying to do, trying to do, trying to do. It was falling down. We were gonna lose the neighborhood. And I insisted that I could get it funded. I could get it funded. I could get it funded. And everybody was against me, from planners to the administration. Ted was against me. The mayor was, everybody was like, no, 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 no. And I held my ground. I held my ground against them. It worked out. We did get the funding. I got them the funding. It's finishing up now. They're doing the groundbreaking. So that was a hard decision, though, because here again, I had not been there as long as the other people. I believed in something. I had, I really thought we could do it, and I had to stand up against a lot of people who had been there a lot longer than I had that were not agreeing with me. That was hard. Glad I did it, but it was hard.
I'm sure many other people would have probably happy you did it.
Yeah, they are. They are now. It was a little dicey there for a while.
Do you believe Massachusetts has a housing problem?
Has a?
Housing problem.
I think Massachusetts has an affordability problem with housing. My son just bought a house, and I can't believe what he had to pay for it. I mean, and he had to borrow money from us and his in-laws and his this and everything just to buy a little tiny starter house. It was like $700,000. I think we have an affordability problem on housing. I think if the housing we have were more affordable, I think more people would be buying it or renting it or moving into it.
Do you believe the Massachusetts Legislative Branch and the Executive Branch are to blame for the city's town's dire financial situation?
Well, what I will say is the state aid has never kept up with the cost of living, with the increase in, in costs that it is to do business. They're coming through with a lot more programs, but I would also say that those programs are very difficult to apply for. You have to have very specific skills on how to get the funding from them. So to that extent, I would say.
Say?
That they are.
Yes.
They are. They're not funding us. I think we should all be lobbying the State House, saying, you need to keep up with the cost of living increase. We just can't do this. We don't get all of our budget from you. We get a fraction of our budget from you. But the fact that it's not keeping up with the rise in costs to do business, that's a problem.
What are your thoughts on the MBTA zoning act?
I fought it a long time. I really did. Weymouth was not a problem. They already had three stations. They were already within compliance. It wasn't an issue. Middleborough, I think they tried to, I think the state tried to apply a one-size-fits-all solution, and it didn't fit most of the communities. Middleborough, for instance, we fought. I mean, we fought. We went up to the State House. We actually made some headway and, and did wins and, and finally got something that I think we can live with. But this bothered me, too, about the state when they came out with the regulations. They said, it's not a one-size-fit-all. We'll work with communities that don't fit into the little box. And they didn't. They didn't. They didn't do it with Middleborough. I, I know it was, it was late for Marshfield to even approve it at the, at the ballot, so I'm sure they didn't do it with Marshfield. They tried to apply city-like regulations to rural or outside, or, or suburban areas. And they said they weren't gonna do that. I went back and pulled and argued with them from their first release of that regulation that said, this is not gonna be a one-size-fit-all. We'll discuss and, and work out with every community something that they're comfortable with, and they didn't do it. That's all I'll say.
Or is that all you want to say?
Hopefully, I'm not gonna work for the state soon. There are good people at the state, too. Don't get me wrong. There are. I work with them. I do.
Do you believe the state needs to reform its zoning laws?
Its zoning laws? I think, I think the state needs to stay out of towns' business. Towns know their zoning better. I don't think they should try to really apply and impose their zoning ideas on every town. So yes, in that case, they should reform them.
When will you be able to stop if the Select Board approves you?
We are in December, probably after the first of the year. It would have to be January. I don't want to leave. I started an entire department with the company I'm with. I want to set them up so that they can continue that.
Why did you choose to apply to be a town administrator in Marshfield?
Because having been away from government and municipal government and working in it, I'm not happy. Bottom line, I wanted back in. This came up. It's a similar size to Middleborough, a similar budget to Middleborough. It's a coastal community like Weymouth was. It's a coastal community like where I'm from. And I just thought I would be a good fit.
Is that it?
Yeah, I would be happy here. I would be very happy here.
Okay. Steve?
How did?
All of your other takes, yeah, pal?
Thanks. How did you first learn about the opening in Marshfield?
Um, I saw it on the MMA website, I believe. Yeah. I'm looking at all of them all the time.
Um, what steps have you taken to learn about Marshfield, and what challenges do you see facing the community?
Um, well, I did the regular. I know Green Community. I know CPA. I know, um, now the, the vote in June twenty-first for MBTA compliance. Um, uh, I saw, I read the master plan, uh... Population, uh, income, budget, uh, the percentage of budget that goes to e- everything. I, I read, uh, where something that I looked at, the insurance costs went down, and so did the debt service. Debt service, I understood. I'm not so sure how, about the insurance costs. I'd, I'd like to dig a little further into that. Um, so, yeah, so I looked up the town a lot. And, and, you know, having been in Waymouth, living in Middleborough, I drove through here for, for almost five years every day. So, um, so, yes, I did look into the town a lot, and I think I could spur economic development. I think I could definitely, um, assist with, uh, the coastal infrastructure and securing that up and getting it funded. There are a lot of new programs out there that are doing this. There are long-term loan, very low interest, some forgiveness programs modeled after the state revolving funds, and I think that would be a way to go and supplement it with, uh, with grants like MVP Coastal Zone Management, which are, which I've all gotten and I'm very familiar with, DAMN Sea Wall, Seaboard Economic Council, even the PROTECT grant, depending on how much of an evacuation group. So I think I could do a lot for the coastal. Um, I think I could, uh... I know that I, I did look into it, and I see you're drafting procurement rules. I think my experience in procurement would be very valuable because I know the whole process from beginning to end. Um, and if I don't know it, I know a lot of people at the state because I've worked at, worked with them and I can call them. So I think the procurement would be very valuable here. Um, and I'm gonna ring my tourism bell one more time. I really, you are so well situated. Time geographically to grasp onto that with limited effort as well.
Could you describe your familiarity with Proposition Two and a Half and the fiscal challenges facing municipalities across the state?
Well, yeah, you're limited, Two and a Half. You, you have two options. You have to really boost your new growth to get more revenues than Two and a Half, and you have to, or if your property values go up, that, that could help as well. Um, it's very limiting. It is. But being a taxpayer myself and knowing the residents, you can't put the burden of everything on them. Yes, we work for them, but we, I think it's a necessary evil. So you have to look outside the box. The new growth is your very next step, increasing revenues on, um, optional taxes, like the room taxes, the, the meal taxes, um, things like that.
And on your resume, you have recent experience listed as an assistant town administrator in Waymouth. And given that mayor has a, uh, Waymouth has a, a mayor, could you clarify exactly what your role was there?
Sure. Well, there's the mayor. There's a chief of staff, who was also the slash administrator, and I was the assistant administrator to him. So they, they put all kinds of labels on me, program manager, this, the other thing. But essentially, I shadowed the chief of staff, who was the administrator, and took part in everything that he did, plus special projects. Um, one thing that he did not do that I did and which I've really expounded upon this last year in my private, um, experience is the infrastructure and project management of construction projects.
Right. And, you know, it, it looks like that you, you know, refined your resume to relevant work experience or executive experience. Is your role in Waymouth your current occupation, or what is the current professional role that you have?
My title is grant administrator procurement specialist project manager for an engineering company that does everything.
Okay.
And most of our clients are municipal clients.
Okay, thank you. And could you describe your experience in the development of a budget for a municipality?
Well, yeah, I, like I said, I worked with project, I worked with the finance team, being the treasurer, the accountant, the assessor. We would get the, the, and the auditor. I worked with him. He was across the hall from me. And we would get the Schedule A ready. We would put that out. We would, um, work with the assessor to figure out what the tax revenue was going to be. We would do projections for next year's revenue. We would, uh, see what the tax rate needed to be set at and recommended, and then we would meet with every single department and go, like I said, line item by line item. Um, some things had to be moved around. And at that same time, we were doing a capital plan where we would put out a form to all the departments, and the departments would rank, give us their capital requests, rank them high priority, down to lowest priority, and then we would try to fit them into a capital budget. Capital budget's very important because if you let your infrastructure and your capital assets deteriorate, it's only gonna cost you more in the long run. So, um, the other major thing that I did for the budget was I was the grant person. They used to call me the grant guru, twenty million dollars a year, not counting ARPA. So I went after grants aggressively, federal, local, state, private, and that helped to supplement almost all the, or pay for entirely, most of the infrastructure projects we did.
Have you reviewed Marshfield's town charter, and if so, what were your takeaways or SWOT analysis?
I, I've looked through the charter briefly. Um, it, it, it looks, uh... Similar to a lot of, of towns around here. Um... I mean, details right off the top of my head. I didn't read that, that. I, I looked through it. I looked through the budget more. I looked through those kinds of things more.
Sure. And if there's something that you could undo in your professional career, what would it be?
Um, maybe not undo, but redo. I think I would have gotten into this earlier. I mean, I loved music career. I had it for twenty years. I traveled. I, I was everywhere. I did, I learned four languages. Um, but that kind of faded after a while, and I think if I had started earlier, although you never know when you start earlier. I think I might, I would have liked to start earlier.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
What did you play? Or what do you play?
I sang opera.
Oh.
Metropolitan Opera winner from New England. Yep.
Impressive.
Sang all over the world.
Wow.
For about twenty years.
Can you do something right now?
No, we, we don't wanna do that, although I do say I...
This is part of your interview!
I have sung. I sing the national anthem at town meetings. I go and I perform at the Council on Aging. I do, I do stuff around. And I'm conducting the bell choir for Middleborough's t- uh, tree lighting, so...
Oh, very nice. Very nice. All right. Back to serious stuff.
Okay.
Um, as town administrator, you would serve as a central link between the select board, town employees, and the residents. How do you envision building and maintaining effective working relationships with each of these groups? And what approaches would you use to balance their sometimes differing needs and expectations?
Well, on this front, I think I have an advantage because I've served as a select person and as an actual employee. So I know both sides. Um, and I, I, I'm pretty famous for my public outreach. I mean, I have knocked on literally seventy-eight houses on every street in order to get the word out to the residents. I have town, uh, regular meetings with organizations and, and public meetings so that people can ask questions. I have people in my office. So, um, as far as knowing what the select board wants, and, and it's, it's a different animal than being a bureaucrat and being the one who's actually working for the town. Um, select board has to think, and God bless you, I don't wanna ever do it again, but, um, the select board has to think a little differently. And an administrator needs to be aware of that and know where they're coming from. And at the end of the day, it's the administrator's job to carry out the select board's directive. You guys have the hard job. You decide what you wanna do. I just figure out how to do it. Does that mean I shut up and just say yes, absolutely, no? Absolutely not. If I think there's a better way from something that I've experienced, or if I think you're going down an, a, a, a road maybe you shouldn't, I'm gonna express that. But ultimately, it's your decision, and I respect that. And I will carry out your directive, and I will advise on the way I think that best can be done. Um, as far as the public, now, there's a lot of talk everywhere about transparency. Yes, everything has to be transparent. You have to follow the law, which makes every process transparent, but that's never enough. There's always gonna be somebody in the community that says, I didn't know this. When did they decide that? They're gonna do that. They are going to do that. So I like to take things a little bit further and use every medium at my disposal, whether it's calling a special meeting of a neighborhood, whether it's social media, very great tool at this point, um, the weekly updates, the monthly updates, whatever they are, or whether it is getting out and knocking on those doors 'cause no one's answering you. Um, so you have to kind of take with the public, you have to take that transparency one step further and almost bring it to them in every way you can. Of course, you follow the laws, but they don't always reach everybody. So that's how I...
Excellent. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my last question is, Marshfield has a rich and proud history, and part of that history includes longstanding connections within our political and civic systems. To help us understand your perspective and potential role here, could you share whether you have any existing relationship with Marshfield employees, boards, or local organizations?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. Um, I know a former, uh, I, I just knew a former employee, Caroline LaCroy, who used to work here 'cause I had her daughter for voice lessons. She lives in Middleborough. And I do know your new, I think, executive assistant to the select board, Michelle. She was in Middleborough for a while.
Okay, yep.
But that's, other than that, I, I don't think I have any other...
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Good? Thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Delby. Oh, is it Mrs. Delby?
Mrs. Miss.
This is Delby. Uh, so we're gonna have a discussion with the board right now in regards to how we're gonna go forward with this. I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
And, uh, we will get back to you, especially when we're gonna make a decision on that. Obviously, you probably will do it right now if you wanna hang out. So... So, um, in regards to all this, you guys wanna set a date when you wanna take a vote on this?
Sure.
You thinking next Monday is good?
Our next meeting's on the fifteenth, right?
Yeah. You wanna wait till the fifteenth?
Well, right, we just had the town hall today with the department heads and town employees, and that gives us time to collect their anonymous feedback and weigh the input, and then that gives us more time to do additional vetting and outreach. And I think we're s- we might still be waiting on some of the final reference checks from the Collins Center, but, you know, I, I think we can fit it on our next meeting, but I'm open to doing it sooner if that's what other folks wanna do.
My only concern is I think we have a lot on the fifteenth, so it just...
We don't want to do the fif- we can do it the sixteenth or whatever, so, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm open to what you guys want. I mean, I don't want anybody to feel rushed on this either, you know. If you think next Monday's too soon, so be it, you know. So, I mean, whatever you wanna do. Just gotta remember, I think Mr. Gaffigan said he needs at least six weeks' notice. And I believe he would like notice 'cause you said, well, you wouldn't be able to until January first, right, so...
Uh, what about potentially middle of next week? I don't know. That would give us the beginning of the week and...
See, Wednesday, Thursday?
I, I could do either.
Yes, yeah, I mean, yeah, I could do that.
All right, so, Steve, you guys wanna, or do you want me to just drop a date and call it that?
Well, he seemed apprehensive, so...
Um, I mean, you could just, as long as we decide by Thursday, that gives us enough time to comply with open meeting law with two business days' notice, so, you know, um...
Well, Thur- not Thursday, this week.
Yeah, we're talking next week.
Next week.
Right, no, I just mean with the...
The eleventh.
Right. I, I, I'm thinking the eighth, ninth, or tenth could work, so I just mean...
Oh.
We don't have to decide like right this second, as long as we decide by EOD Thursday. But, yeah, I could, I could do the eighth, ninth, or tenth, I'm pretty sure.
Next week?
Mm-hmm. Next week, yeah.
So what do you wanna do? What's the, what's the eighth, ninth, tenth? Is that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Is that what you're looking at?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? All right, so Thursday's out for you, is what you're saying?
I could do Thursday.
I like the tenth.
So the tenth is a Wednesday?
If I could.
Yes.
We'll, tomorrow, we will, uh, document all the surveys that we received
Yep.
from our union leaders and, um, department heads, and we'll get that to the board members tomorrow.
Okay. Do you think it's reasonable for the tenth?
I do.
Okay.
All right, so let's schedule it for the tenth, Charlie. Um, six, good. It's, um, I imagine, might be the only matter, but there could be a couple of small matters we could take up and get out of the way if need be, so, uh, the six o'clock, all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, too.
Thank you, likewise. Okay.
You, too. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Um, all right, I wanna say thank you to the search committee who's here, uh, and everything. Uh, I thought you, the two candidates you put forward uh, seemed pretty damn good to me. Uh, so it's just gonna be some tough decisions to make at the end of the day. Um, so, uh, let's call, close this meet note. Uh, I'd like to take a vote to adjourn this December second meeting at eight oh nine. Do I have a second?
Is there anything that you guys wanted to add before we close the meeting? Okay, second?
Uh, I?
I.
Hi. You?